Good evening, Kettering, Ohio. Welcome to the regularly scheduled City of Kettering Plan and Commission meeting for August the 4th, 2025. The Plan and Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by council whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the city council. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting for rebroadcast on Channel 6 and streaming live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. Since this meeting is both audio and videotaped to form a complete record for possible appeal to the city council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission will need to come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. At this time, I'd like to introduce the Plan and Commission's staff. To my far left is Ken Lackey, Assistant Secretary. Next to him is Carol Fisher, Secretary. To my right is Don Rethman, Commissioner. I am Troy Erbus, Chairman. And from the city staff tonight, we have Ryan Holmesy, City Planner. With that, we'll begin with our agenda. First on the agenda is Old Business: Approval of Minutes of July 21st, 2025. Do we have any comments on the meeting minutes of July 21st from the commission?
I have none.
No.
If we have none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of July 21st, 2025?
So moved.
So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Holmesy, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Erbus?
And I will abstain since I was not here. And I also want to thank Mr. Rethman for carrying the gavel for us at the last meeting. So appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to item number two, which is the Zoning and Text Amendments to Modify Various Sections of the Zoning Code. This is Planning Commission Case 25-008. It is a public hearing. The case is continued from the July 21st, 2025 meeting. At this time, I believe I'll turn it over to Mr. Holmesy.
Thank you, Chairman. And from the last meeting, I would also like to thank Carol for opening the meeting and nominating Don Rethman to be the Chair Pro Tempore, which I don't think I've ever had to do that, be at a meeting where that had to happen before, but now we know if it happens again. Yeah, this item was discussed at the last meeting, and it was continued due to the size of the report that went out before the last meeting. Tonight's presentation will be similar to the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I'll go a little bit faster, but just like last time, if you have any questions while I'm speaking, just go ahead and ask. Don't wait till the end. And if we need to make any modifications to the motion, we can work those in at the end of the meeting. Okay, so like last time, I will go through each chapter, and I will discuss the changes that aren't necessarily substantial, but they're substantial enough that we think they're worth bringing up at a meeting. So, Chapter 1135, which establishes the zoning districts in the city, among other things, this ordinance creates the Neighborhood Business District that we had talked about before, which is essentially, it's a less intense business district for mostly non-automobile-oriented retail uses plus office uses. Because right now, the way our code is written, you go from the office district straight into the business district, and there's not a middle ground district that might be more appropriate as in a neighborhood. So we wanted to take care of that issue in the code. Going along with that, Table 31.3 of Section 1135.01 is just the list of permitted principal uses. So as a part of that, this amendment, we add the Neighborhood Business District. Based on discussions we had had with city council more than a year ago, we'll be adding the short-term rental uses to the residential use section. Going along with the creation of the Neighborhood Business District, we need to split the restaurant use into two different categories. One that's like drive-through slash drive-in, and another that's more of a sit-down restaurant. Right now, microbreweries are in our industrial use category. We want to move those into the commercial use category. And then, an item that we had discussed internally, and it came up, we discussed it very briefly at a meeting several months ago, this amendment also adds some of the lighter industrial uses as permitted uses in the business zoning district. This is mainly due to the fact that we have some large former big-box store uses that probably aren't going to redevelop as retail uses in the future, but they're designed pretty well for potential light industrial uses, so we just want to add them to the Also, our code right now, we have a use called weapons sales. This amendment would delete that use. It's not because, we're not proposing to delete the use because we want to restrict these uses more, it's just, if you read the definition of the use, "Establishments primarily engaged in the sale or trade of weapons exclusive of firearms and knives." So virtually nothing will fall within this category. I mean, if someone wants to come in and open a shop that sells slingshots, that's fine with me, but we don't feel it needs any special regulations on top of just generic retail regulations. Going along with that, the next chapter, 1137, this is where we have our standards for specific uses. We want to modify the requirements for daycare centers to be more consistent with the State of Ohio requirements. Right now, we require 100 square feet of outdoor play area for every one child being watched at the daycare center, while the State of Ohio requires 60 square feet. We want to make them the same. We also require that daycare centers take access only from arterial or collector roads. And if you, the kinder care that operates at the corner of East Stroop, and I believe Benfield right now takes access off of Benfield, technically if they came in and did a project that triggered full compliance, they'd be required to take access off East Stroop, the way our code's written today, but that would be less advantageous. So we want to modify that standard to be a little more consistent with both what we have in the city today and also what we want to see in the future if more of these uses come into the city. Another change that we had discussed, and we partially accomplished this with an amendment from a few years ago, there are several uses in the code that have a requirement that if they butt up to residential uses, then they're required to, on top of the buffer yard standards that we have in our code, they're required to install a six-foot-tall finished masonry wall along the property line, along the residential use. What we want to do is take that standard and add more options for how to meet it, and I'll discuss that more a little bit later, and also move that requirement into the buffer yard and screening section of the code where we feel it'd be more appropriate than being in the Standards for Specific Uses chapter. And I'll explain that a little bit more in detail later in the presentation. We also have an old 10-acre minimum lot size requirement for hospital uses, which is somewhat arbitrary. It hasn't come up here, but where I worked before, there was a, the post-acute medical had a, I believe, a 40-bed operation inside of the Kettering Health Network facility in Miami'sburg, and they wanted to expand. And Kettering Health wanted the room to, the post-acute medical took up in their facility to expand their own operations, so they built a new facility across the street, 62-bed, two-story facility, but that property's about 5.4 acres or 5.6 acres. That wouldn't have been permitted in Kettering, but it's a perfectly fine, perfectly fine operation that we wouldn't want to discourage. Also, this is a really minor change. Right now, for several different industrial uses, including laboratories and fabrication/ industrial crafts, if you have any outdoor storage areas, they're required to be 150 feet from any adjoining residential properties, which is fine if what you're storing is really obtrusive, but we want to modify that to allow, if you're storing something that's six feet or less in height, then it can be a little bit closer. And what we've said is, keep those storage areas outside of the buffer yard areas, which our code requires a 40-foot minimum buffer yard width. If you're storing anything bigger than that, you need to continue to meet the 150-foot setback requirement. Any questions? Okay. Chapter 1139 are our accessory structure and use standards. Most of these changes are pretty minor. We want to clarify that temporary storage containers can't be used for accessory storage structures. We also want to increase the permitted size of sheds from 100 square feet to 144 square feet. The way our code's written today, if you want to build 120-square-foot shed, it falls under the category of a roofed enclosed accessory structure, and they're subject to stricter architectural guidelines. We want to increase that size a little bit so people can build slightly bigger sheds before triggering the stricter architectural standards. Another item that we talked about before, we wanted to add an allowance for uncovered front porches. And we wanted to adjust our gate requirements for pool security fences to be more consistent with the standards of the International Pool Code. I'll get into this in a little more detail in a few slides, because the way our standards are written today, it's a little bit confusing. So, right now, our code allows, that picture to the left, that would be considered a patio, they can go out from the front of the house by eight feet into a required front yard. Except to meet the definition of a patio, you can't be higher, the surface can't be higher than six inches above grade. So that works fine for a lot of properties, but any property that has steps right when you exit, if you want to build something essentially exactly the same as on the left picture, except elevated a little bit higher, you can't do it unless you cover it with a porch roof. We want to modify that so that you can do basically uncovered front porches. The pool security modification, our chief building official gave me some information from the International Pool Code, but the way our code is written today, you can meet, one option is to meet the security requirement by having one of those automatic electronic pool covers. That's staying the same as what we have today, but right now, for the, if you're going to have a vertical barrier, the requirement is a six-foot-tall barrier. And then the third bullet point there is such fence, wall, or other pool barrier in each gate located therein shall be self-closing with a self-latching secure lock. And then, the confusing part is underlined right there, the latch shall not be lower than 48 inches from grade, and I think the word "or" is missing right here. The latch shall be located on the inside of the gate, not accessible to small children. What's being proposed keeps the height the same, and it creates different categories for pedestrian gates, for utility and service gates, like if you have a gate that is intended just for vehicles, if you're spreading mulch around your flower beds in your backyard, it's usually closed and locked. And also, if you have a double door. So, the new proposal for pedestrian gates is, it still needs to open, or have it open outward away from the pool, it still needs to be self-closing and self-latching, it still needs to be equipped to accommodate a locking device, and this next item is the main proposed change. Where the release mechanism of the gate is less than 54 inches above the finished grade measured on the outside of the barrier, the release mechanism, excuse me, the release mechanism shall be located on the pool side of the gate, not accessible to small children. And then for utility and service gates, this is in the international code, it really says they need to remain locked when not in use, which is kind of common practice, because making those self-closing and self-latching is very difficult. Any questions about that? Okay. Couple minor changes in Chapter 1141, which regulates our development pattern districts. When the code was rewritten in 2015, the pattern districts were created. The old code, in our industrial zoning district, had a minimum front yard setback requirement of 25 feet. When the code is rewritten, there were three pattern districts that were created that mostly encompassed our industrial uses. One was suburban business, the other was light industrial, and then the other was industrial. Light industrial and industrial have a 25-foot minimum front yard setback requirement, but suburban business has 35 feet. We just wanted to make those all consistent because they contain similar uses. Also, one of the last amendments that the Plan and Commission reviewed and our city council approved was a provision in the suburban pattern district that allows existing side and rear yard setbacks, if they're smaller than what's required, to be considered conforming. We wanted to add that to the suburban center pattern district as well. Chapter 1143 regulates this general site and environmental standards like access, lighting, and things of that nature. And items like a minimum driveway throat depth. Right now, the smallest driveway throat that you're required to have, which is basically measured from the edge of the road to where the first turning conflict is in the site, right now, the minimum is 40 feet, no matter how big the property is, even if it's really small, which creates some issues for some of our smaller properties. So based on research that we did, 35 feet is a pretty standard requirement for driveway throat for smaller properties, so we wanted to add that to the code. For the access, for the vehicular access and driveway standards, the code right now has a section that allows the zoning administrator to modify the standards in certain instances, and I'll show that on the next slide. But the old zoning code had a similar standard, but it required working with the city engineer and the traffic engineer to approve modifications. And we just wanted to modify, tweak this section a little bit to be more consistent with the old code. This is a little bit hard to see, but right now, we have Section 1143.05.14, that's the modification of standard section for access and driveways. We want to delete the requirement that the applicant needs to prove that the standard will cause a practical difficulty, because it's very, very difficult to prove that there's actually a practical difficulty, but there might be certain situations where no practical difficulty is present, but good engineering practice would recommend a different driveway layout. So we want to delete that, and also require that the zoning administrator work with the city engineer or the city engineers designate. And again, most of these changes are, basically bring this section of the code back into conformity, or back into the, with the, excuse me, I can't speak tonight, back to how the old code was worded, and it basically more clearly lays out the requirements that the zoning administrator and the city engineer need to review when approving modifications to these standards. A couple other changes to this chapter. In our lighting section of the code, we wanted to clarify that the site illumination standards also apply to internal lights that illuminate external areas. This is a little bit of a donut hole in the code today, because it's not uncommon for, if you can't, it's not uncommon now for certain uses to have excessively bright lights inside that are obviously intended to light up the outdoors, and we want to make sure that if you're going to do that, you need to comply with all of our other lighting standards. This amendment would modify which lighting standards must be brought into compliance for certain non-conforming sites when additions 25% or larger in gross floor area, and when new uses are established on a property after abandonment. Because today, if you establish a new use on a property after it's been vacant for six months, or if you propose an addition to an existing building that's 25% or larger than the current gross floor area, you're required to bring the site fully into compliance with all of our lighting standards, which, a lot of them, it's not hard to meet, but there are certain standards like uniformity and maximum pole heights that, if you're forced to meet those requirements, you could force people to remove otherwise functional light poles and rewire basically their entire parking lot. So we want to make sure that if you trigger compliance, you need to meet the light trespass standards, the fixture type, which means if you're going to replace fixtures, we want them to be fully cut off so they don't shine out toward other properties, and also the maximum lighting levels of the code. We also want to add more options for how to meet the lighting uniformity requirements based upon some research that we did from the, I believe, the illumination, the illumination engineer, engineers group, they give certain recommendations, and wanted to bring our code more into conformance with their recommendations. And for demolition standards that we have, this is a really small section of the code that essentially says if you tear down a principal structure, you need to remove all of the site improvements from the property. We wanted to make it clear that you also have to remove any non-conforming signs from the property. Chapter 1145 deals with parking and loading. These first two bullet points, we had talked about at a prior meeting. Right now, the way the code's written for most industrial properties in the city, they fall either within the neighborhood or the village pattern district. In these pattern districts, you're not permitted to have parking in the front yard, so, and driveways aren't considered, are not considered parking, so your driveway needs to dead-end into a conforming parking space either in the side or the rear yard. Typically, that's either an attached garage or a detached garage in the backyard, which this standard works fine in most instances, but it causes problems in a few, in a few other instances, and I'll explain that, and I'll explain that on the next slide. We also want to remove the requirement that loading spaces be clearly marked. Right now, we have that standard in the code, but when people make deliveries to properties, they park where they can and where it's convenient. Requiring a particular marking, it doesn't really control where, how loading and unloading is done on property, so we just want to delete that standard. Also, the way the code's written now, for exterior bike racks, the only bike rack designed that the code explicitly permits are the inverted U bike racks, which they work fine, it's a fine bike rack, but there's other options that can accomplish the same goals as those, post and ring, A bike racks, so we just wanted to add other options to this section of the code. So going along with those driveway requirements that I talked about on the last slide, this is just an example property in the R2 zoning district, they have a, right now, the two-car, the driveway deadends into the garage, which is considered in the side yard. If they came in and wanted to do an eight-foot-wide expansion on the side of the, on the side of their existing driveway, they would have to add a parking pad next to the house so that the new driveway addition deadends into a parking space in the side yard. This property actually has room to do that, but there's a lot of properties in town where there's insufficient room to put that parking pad in. Also, a lot of people don't want to do that, and we're basically forcing people to add more pavement to their property than they might really want to. So we want to modify the code so that if you want to add one additional space, that red outline for a parking expansion would be permitted without that yellow outline area. The maximum driveway width requirements would remain the same as what they are today. Another case that comes up sometimes, it's pretty common in a lot of Kettering's neighborhoods that have the three-bedroom, one-bath houses with an attached one-car garage. It's not uncommon for people to want to convert that one-car garage into a living space with a bedroom or a master bedroom. Problem is, it creates a parking space in the front yard because the garage goes away, so in these instances, they would be required to move the driveway over and create a parking pad next to the house. But in a lot of neighborhoods, there's either not room to do that, or it adds a substantial cost to the project with very limited benefit. So we want to modify that section of the code to allow people to convert their attached garages into living spaces without having to move their driveway to a different location on the site. All right. Any questions?
Good to be here, Chairman.
Thank you. I can't seem to speak this evening, so I apologize. Chapter 1147, Landscaping and Buffer Yards, there's a lot of proposed changes to this chapter. Most of them are intended to introduce more flexibility to the code. We have one requirement in our code now for buffer yard trees, when you're required to have a group, a group A tree, which is basically a big deciduous tree that gets at least 35 feet tall and 35 feet wide. Within the type D and type E buffer yards, which are, if you're a commercial use or an industrial use next to a residential property, you need to have a type E or a type D buffer yard. Our code today requires group A trees in those areas to be canopy trees, which are deciduous trees that get 60 feet tall and 60 feet wide. Problem is, there's not a lot of trees that meet that definition, and also, trees in buffer yards are usually stunted, so we want to allow people to use group A trees in place of canopy trees. Also, like I mentioned earlier, in, when I went over the changes proposed in the Standards for Specific Uses chapter, in the buffer yard chapter, in the buffer yard section of this chapter, we want to add a table that basically lists the uses that are required to have more substantial buffer yard fences or walls, and I will show that on the next slide. So today, certain uses have a requirement similar to the one on the screen now, which is, and this falls in Chapter 1137, which is, "A masonry wall at a six-feet in height shall be provided along any property line of such an establishment adjoining a residential use property, excluding multi-unit dwellings located in the town center or neighborhood center pattern district." And there's several of these spread throughout Chapter 1137. What we want to do is, since it is a buffer yard requirement, basically, take all those uses that have more substantial screening requirements, make a table like this, and then list how those, how the screening requirements can be met below that table, so they're all in one location, and it's a little bit easier to follow. As a part of that, we also want to add another option for how to meet the masonry wall requirement, because the masonry wall requirement has been in the code for a long time. I don't know exactly when it was added, but since it was added to the code, other technologies and options have come about that can meet the same goal at a much lower cost when you first install the wall, and a much lower cost to maintain the wall going forward. So what we want to do is add an option where if you meet these two requirements, that would be considered meeting the masonry wall standard that we have today, which is a privacy fence meeting the following requirements, that is, that has a, the wall has a sound transmission class or STC of at least 26, and it's a pretty high rating, and have either an earth-tone color, or they have a color to match the principal structure. And this picture here is one example of one of the available options that's out there. This is called a Simtech wall. It, we essentially want to allow people to use this type of technology to meet today's masonry wall requirement. You can still build a masonry wall if you want to, that'll meet the standard, but we want to give you another option to do it as well. For streetscape landscaping, we just wanted to clarify that streetscape trees need to be single-stem, and they need to be planted within 10 feet of adjoining sidewalks, because these are intended to provide shade to the sidewalks as they mature. For building foundation landscaping, we want to create an ornamental tree category, because right now, our code requires a certain number of group B trees to be planted along building foundations. A group B tree is a deciduous tree that gets at least 20 feet tall, 20 feet wide, which is pretty large for a tree to plant next to your building. So we just want to add an option to use ornamental trees, which are smaller, to meet that requirement. For parking lot landscaping, we don't want to increase any requirements, but we want to add, right now, our code requires that, if you're required to have a type A buffer yard, which is a buffer yard that might be between two industrial uses, your parking lots are required to be screened along that buffer yard by a four-foot-tall fence or a four-foot-tall hedge, even if you're butting up to another industrial use. So we want to create an exemption where, if you're an industrial use in either the neighborhood or the light industrial pattern district... neighborhood or the light industrial pattern district, and you're adjoining another industrial use, that you are not required to put that parking lot screening in. Going along with that, right now, our code allow, you're only permitted to have, and this is regardless of the use or regardless of the pattern district where you're located, chain link fences are only permitted within rear yard areas anywhere in the city. We want to allow chain link fences to be built with, for, at industrial properties within the neighborhood industrial or light industrial pattern districts. Also, we had a board of zoning appeals meeting a few months ago, because the, the water tower over on East David, which you can't even really tell it's there, because there's so much vegetation around it, but there had been some vandalism there, and they wanted to put up a security fence along the front of the property, back about forty feet from the front property line, and they wanted to put barbed wire at the top of it, which is pretty standard for protecting water towers, pump stations, electrical substations, and things of that nature. But they had to go to our board of zoning appeals to get a variance for that to be approved. But, if you look around the city, pretty much all of our water towers and pump stations and electrical substations have a barbed wire chain link fence surrounding them to provide protection. So, we want to create, carve out a couple exemptions that would, that would basically allow those items to be considered permitted, provided they meet the following requirements. The first is that the barbed wire is at least six feet above grade, measured on the outside of the fence. The fence is intended to provide security to public water and/or sewer facilities or electrical substations. The fence is screened from the public right of way and adjoining properties by a minimum eight foot tall evergreen hedge. If the fence is a wrought iron style security fence, the hedge is not required. One item that I mentioned at the last meeting was, I wanted to do some research to find out if, if where we have these fences, there's a standard setback from the front property line. There's a pretty healthy mixture, but we feel like there needs to be a setback from the front property line for these items, so that they can be effectively screened. So, the minimum, one of the requirements we recommend is, is that the fence is set back at least twenty feet from all sidewalks and fifteen feet from all front and street side, and street side lot lines, and then, the required streetscape landscaping is installed along all frontages. So, to give a few examples, this is the water tower going into the Farrington Place neighborhood. They have a hedge that screens it, but this is, this is a six foot tall chain link fence with barbed wire on top of it. This is the electric substation along East Dorothy. I'm not using this as a good example, because they don't have any screening there, but the fence itself is not the problem. The problem is the lack of screening. This is the substation along Presidential. They have some screening. The fence is pretty far back. And then, I don't believe the fence is up at East David yet, so I wasn't able to get a picture of that, but these are a few examples. We want to make it so the fence is permitted, provided certain aesthetic improvements are made to the property. Another item in this chapter is the requirement for how to screen dumpster, or how to screen dumpsters and recycling bins and things of that nature, for non-residential principal permitted uses. So, right now, if you have a non-residential principal permitted use, you're required to screen the dumpster with a six foot tall high finished masonry wall, similar in style and finish to that of the principal structure. And the sta, the standard is fine, but we've run into some issues when you have a, there's no exempt, there's no exception for having a masonry wall if you're a really small property, really small business. So, you can have a project where the masonry, where the masonry wall by itself makes up twenty, thirty percent of the total price of the whole project that you need to put into the property. So, we wanted to make, similar to what we proposed with the masonry wall screens along residential properties for certain uses, we wanted to add another option where you can still do the masonry wall to screen your dumpster area, but also, you have another option to do, use a minimum six foot tall fence meeting the following specifications. The fence is comprised of fade resistant materials. It is supported by steel reinforced rails and panels with the posts set at least twenty-eight inches below grade. Is earth tone in color or matches the principal structure in color, and with the exception of the gates, is not comprised of wood. And again, this is just intended, the, the masonry wall requirement was created because wood enclosures don't last very long. They get hit, they fall apart, and they just don't last. But you can have a stronger fence that, that's protected with bollards that meets the same intent at a much lower price. Also, we're proposing a couple minor changes to the modification of standards section of the landscaping chapter. The main change is really, right, for existing sites that are already developed, if a project comes in that triggers full compliance with today's standards, we routinely approve modifications to what the minimum requirements are, usually in the form of allowing the buffer yard to be a little bit narrower, because a lot of times, there's just not room to put the required buffer yard in, without basically demolishing half the parking lot. So, we wanted to delete the requirement that, to approve a modification, that you need to prove that the standard creates a practical difficulty. But most importantly, we want to ensure that the alternative arrangement that's proposed will provide a comparable level of protection imposed by the original standard. So, all right, moving on, chapter 1149, this deals with our architectural standards. Most of these proposed changes deal with industrial uses in the neighborhood, industrial and light industrial pattern districts. Right now, there's a standard in, in this chapter that limits blank wall areas to be no more than ten feet in height and twenty feet in width. And this works fine for most office and commercial uses, because the buildings are usually no taller than eighteen feet. So, you have the, the cap and the base and the expression line, and you meet that standard pretty easily. Industrial buildings can be much taller. So, it can create issues where you have, where you're basically, could potentially be forcing people to put architectural elements on their building that aren't really necessary. So, we want to make it so, if you're an industrial user within these pattern districts, a blank wall area can be up to twenty feet in height and twenty feet in width. Going along with that, we want to permit the caps and bases to be just contrasting colors or materials, rather than requiring that such design features project out from the facade by at least one inch. And the biggest change that's proposed is, we don't have a huge number of metal buildings in the city. As a part of proposing this amendment, we did an evaluation of all of our industrial, our industrial parks, and there's only a few one hundred percent metal buildings in the city. There's, there's several that have metal additions or metal components. I have some pictures coming up in a few slides, but we wanted to add an exemption from the finish requi, uh, finished material standard that, that allows existing metal buildings to be added on to with the same finished material, provided the following standards are met. The first is, the structure was built legally, the use is conforming, the use is industrial, the structure is located within the neighborhood, light industrial, suburban or suburban business pattern districts. With the exception of the finished materials, the addition meets all of the applicable architectural requirements. And if the structure containing the non-conforming finished material includes a design feature such as a brick base, that design feature must be extended across the entirety of the addition. Have a couple photos on the next couple slides. Dealing with the cap and base requirement, this is a building where the base and the cap, well, the base is mostly a contrasting color, it doesn't project out by an inch. This is not in Kettering, it's just an example. But we want to make designs like this conforming with our code, where basically, this color change down here would meet the base requirement, and if there was a color change along the cap, it would meet the cap requirement. When it comes to the metal buildings, here's a couple examples. This building is block at the bottom and metal on the top. This building has a brick base with a metal top. This is a building that has a small metal component at the top of the building, but otherwise is a split face block. We want these buildings and other buildings in town to be able to be added on to and match what's there today when it comes to the finished materials. Another cha, another recommended change, right now, in the code, if you have a flat roof on your building, you're required to have a minimum twelve inch tall parapet wall on all sides of the building, which is, which is fine. There's nothing wrong with that standard. But, it causes some issues for industrial development. The intent of that standard is to do a couple things. First, to screen the rooftop mechanical equipment, if there is any, and to conceal the edge of the roof. We had a project that came in last year, which was an addition to an industrial property, and they're not proposing any rooftop mechanical equipment. They had a small parapet wall that got about six inches tall along certain sides of the building, and they were using a concealed gutter system on the principal facades. But, I had to tell them they needed to make their parapet wall twelve inches tall, even though what they're proposing met the intent of the standard. So, we want to, we're proposing a code change that would allow staff to approve shorter parapet walls on industrial users in certain pattern districts, as long as a concealed gutter system is used on the principal facades, as long as a parapet wall is provided that conceals the edge of the roof, as long as no rooftop mechanical equipment is proposed, and should that be added in the future, that the rooftop mechanical equipment be screened. I believe I did mention this at the last meeting. This is a really minor change. Right now, section 1149 dot oh three dot ten is titled infill standards, and this deals with, if you have a vacant lot in a residential area and you want to build a house on it, what you build needs to be consistent with what's around you. It doesn't need to be exactly the same, but if you have a neighborhood full of brick ranch homes, and you find a vacant lot, you can't put one of those UFO houses down on it, without violating the standard. Also, if you're building an addition onto an industrial, or I'm sorry, onto a residential property, the addition needs to be consistent with what's there, when it comes to materials and architectural design. What's missing from our code today is, if you're doing a major repair, like re-siding your house, or reshingling your roof, you're supposed to replace all of it, so it's all consistent, but our code doesn't say that right now. So, we want to kind of add that to the code, or if you're doing a major modification or repair, all sides of the, of the house need to be consistent. And that includes garage conversions. If you're gonna remove the garage door and fill it in, what you fill it in with needs to be consistent with the rest of your house. You can't have like a painted, painted plywood or something on a house that's otherwise brick or vinyl siding. Moving on, chapter 1159, fifty-one deals with signs. Most of these changes are fairly minor. Right now, in the zoning code for our business and business park zoning districts, if you have a multi-tenant building, the maximum sign area is allowed to be one square foot of sign area for every one foot of tenant space frontage. If you're a single tenant building, it's half a square, you can have half a square foot of sign area for every one foot of building frontage. We just want to make those consistent, to actually increase the allowable sign area for single tenant buildings. Also, the way our code is written today, for temporary signs, you're required to get a permit, and that permit is valid for, it allows you to put your temporary sign out for thirty days, or for no more than thirty consecutive days. And if, the way our code's written, you're permitted to have a certain number of temporary signs on a property out, no more than four times a year, no more than thirty consecutive days each. The way the code's written today, you need to get a separate permit for each thirty days, which really just ma, which really just makes it so no one gets a per, most people don't get the permit. So, we want to make it so if you get a permit, it's good for the whole year. We can keep, allow, you can put it out four times for thirty consecutive days each. Also, for temporary banners, which, basically, they're mounted to a building wall. If you have a permanent, permanent signs are required to be one foot from the edges of the wall where they're located, but banners are required to be two feet away. We want to make those consistent, so banners can be within one foot of the edge of the walls on which they're mounted. Going along with that, permanent ground signs are required to be at least ten feet setback from the front property line, while temporary signs are required to be fifteen feet setback. We want to make those each ten feet, just to be consistent. And going along with the change to the demolition standards I mentioned earlier, we want to require that non-conforming signs be removed from properties when the principal structure is demolished.
Mr. Holmesy?
Yeah.
I'll give you a second to catch your breath and ask you a question there.
Thank you.
Going back to your signage, and you talk about temporary signage, I'm curious, obviously, you know, during the election time, there's a lot of signs posted all over the area, different sizes, different locations, right of way, close to the road. Is there anything that's in our code that would help you maybe maintain some of that numerous placement, or is that something you guys don't get too worried about? You can take your time to answer, give you a second.
For residential properties, you're not required to have a permit to put out a temporary sign, and that includes political signs. The setback, and the setback requirement is also three feet from the front property line for residential properties, and I believe it's a grand total of twelve square feet. You can spread that out for how many, however many signs you want to put out, as long as collectively, it's no more than twelve square feet. So, residential properties for the most, you'll occasionally see signs in the right of way, and those are occasionally picked up, because they're not permitted in the right of way at all. No temporary signs are. The issues we have when it comes to, and our sign code is completely content neutral, we don't have a section for political signs, we just view them as normal temporary signs. The areas where we have the biggest issues are on busy street, busy corners, and throughout election season, if they, gets too out of control, we'll occasionally go out and pick those up, and we try to contact the party offices to let them know, like, we actually have a form, letter that we provide, that basically tell people, here's the requirements, follow these requirements, and you should be fine. But if they don't, which it happens sometimes, we'll pick them up and put them at our service department where they can pick them up later. But, to answer your actual question, I, I don't think there's anything we could really add to the code that would solve the issue of how many political signs are put out during political season. It's just, it's part of the process. We do occasionally get phone calls from business properties complaining about people putting signs on their, on their properties, and we just tell them, it's your, they're trespassing, take, take it down. So, I can't think of anything we could really add to the code that would help when it comes to signs.
Okay. I'm just curious, is there anything there that you needed to do or discuss, or we should talk about?
No, we're not proposing to change the max size or maximum heights or anything, just, so, these changes shouldn't, for the temporary signs, there's, there's, there shouldn't be a noticeable change anywhere around town. We're really just making it consistent with common practice.
Okay.
What people already do. Any other questions? Thank you.
Carry on.
Okay. Chapter 1153, these are procedures and enforcement. These are, this, this chapter of the code basically tells us how we review conditional uses, how we review permits, how we review variances and everything, and how we review permit applications. But, there's a couple items that are missing from this chapter, one of which is, if people apply for a permit, and we either approve it or deny it, it's pretty easy. Eventually, that, the approved permit expires after six months, the denied permit is just denied. But there's really not a procedure for, someone applies for a permit, and we send comments back to them, and they just never respond. So, we wanted to add some language that allows us, after a hundred eighty days, to expire those applications and require people to reapply. That's really just a record keeping item. Also, another section of the code deals with when we issue zoning certificates. A zoning certificate is usually issued once the project is completed. A zoning certificate is usually, uh, issued once the project is complete and the certificate basically tells the, uh, user of the property that they're good to go with operating their business. They've met all the requirements of the permit and, and of the zoning code. But every once in a while, it, it won't be planting season for landscaping. There'll be a shortage of certain supplies. They have, uh, curb work scheduled, but it's a month out because contractors are so busy. In those inst-, instances, there's, we have the ability to enter into what we call compliance agreements. Uh, where we basically lay out, here's what you have to do, here's the deadline, and it allows them to operate their business, understanding that they'll, they'll meet these benchmarks. We just wanted to add a section to the code that makes it clear, if you don't meet those benchmarks, it's a violation of the zoning code. Uh, another change is our property maintenance inspectors assist greatly in enforcing standards of the zoning code, but the pro-, they have their own property maintenance code, uh, and the notification requirements are different in each code. So, we want to make them the same, so that there's no confusion about, uh, getting service on a notice of violation. Uh, chapter eleven fifty-five, this deals with our nonconformities. Uh, what sort of projects trigger compliance requirements, uh, and things of that nature. There's a couple sections of the, of the zoning code, one of which is labeled, uh, titled continuance and another which, another of which is titled conditions. If you read both of those sections, they don't make sense. Like, it, it doesn't make, they're very confusing. Uh, but if you look at the old zoning code, it's essentially, there's a, there was a right-to-continue section in the old zoning code uh, that dealt with nonconforming uses. And when that zoning code was rewritten, that was split into two sections, and that's the continuance and conditions section. But it's very confusing, we just wanted to combine those together into one section. Uh, nonconforming structures as it relates to architecture. Uh, right now, if you are modifying ten percent or more of a principal facade, uh, you're required to bring that entire facade into compliance with all of our architectural standards, including minimum transparency. Most of our, most of our standards aren't hard to bring into compliance. So, ten percent change to the principal facade, uh, usually it's not hard to meet the cap and base requirement and the, uh, expression line and things of that nature. But minimum transparency can be very hard to meet. You basically have to cut holes in your building, put windows in. If, if, if you didn't plan on it, it can really hamper a potential project. So, we wanted to increase the amount of a principal facade that needs to be changed from ten percent up to fifty percent, uh, before the minimum transparency requirements were triggered. Uh, another item, and this goes along with that project I mentioned earlier that we got an application for last year, it was an addition on to an existing industrial building. That project did not trigger compliance requirements with the re-, for the rest of the structure. Uh, but had it triggered compliance requirements for the rest of the structure, it would have been virtually impossible to meet our today's standards with that structure because of how old it was. Uh, also, like I mentioned earlier, we do, we don't have a lot of metal buildings around town, but we do have a lot of smooth block, uh, uh, concrete masonry unit buildings, uh, which today is no longer permitted. Uh, if you, you can do split-face block, but smooth face block is no longer permitted. So, we want to create an exemption where if you're building an addition on to an existing, uh, industrial structure, uh, it would permit the existing nonconformant, conformant architecture to remain in place, provided no nonconformities are increased. Uh, but this section would require certain site nonconformities to be brought into compliance. And this is mainly intended to prevent a situation where you're, uh, proposing an addition and it triggers full compliance and you're forced to rescan your entire building. Uh, which could potentially be a, it could hamper some good, what would otherwise be good projects. Uh, as a part of a, uh, amendment from a few years ago, uh, the council approved, we added a section of the, of, uh, chapter eleven fifty-five, and that's modification of standards for nonconforming sites. Right now, this section really only applies to, uh, the sizes of parking spaces and drive aisles. Uh, because we had, we did a study almost four years ago where we went through and looked at every, every non-residential property in the city, did a quick review to find out what are the nonconformities and, uh, what nonconformities could potentially be very hard to meet if a project came in that triggered full compliance. And, uh, one of the items that stood out to us is minimum parking space and drive aisle sizes, because we have a lot of properties around town that developed a long time ago and they don't meet our minimum drive aisle and parking space size requirements, but the site has been functioning fine for decades. And we didn't want to force people to mill up their parking lot and re-stripe it and potentially lose a lot of, uh, space that could be used for other, uh, uses. So, an old amendment, we added this section to deal with parking, uh, parking space and drive aisle dimensions and also our landscaping standards. We wanted to add, uh, light pole height requirements. So, if you do a project that triggers full compliance, if you have existing light poles that are too tall, you can keep them, provided you meet our other lighting standards. And this was based on a, uh, we did go around town and look at a lot of the li-, mainly office developments and, uh, multifamily housing developments. And most of them have light poles that are taller than what our code allows. And we want to avoid situations where we force people to cut down otherwise functional light poles. Uh, also, uh, I'll go through these really quick. As a part of the overall amendments, we, we needed to modify and add some definitions. Uh, we don't have a definition for automobile detailing establishment or automobile washing establishment. We want to add those. We don't have a definition for bank or concealed gutter or discount store or chain-link privacy and non-privacy fences. Excuse me. Uh, we wanted to add a definition for accessory dwelling units because if you read the proposed standards for, uh, short-term rentals, one of the standards is that you can't convert an accessory dwelling unit into a short-term rental. In order to enforce that, we needed to add a definition. And that's mainly what that's for. Uh, financial institutions, equipment, grocery store, home improvement store, interactive teller machines, which I didn't know were a thing until I was doing some research on this project, uh, light trespass, bicycle parking space, excuse me, bicycle parking space. Uh, the main reason we wanted to add a definition for this item is because it hasn't come up yet, but it's not uncommon in other jurisdictions where, especially when, uh, multifamily housing is being built, it's not uncommon for, uh, the developer to provide indoor bicycle parking for the tenants. And we just wanted to make it so if that sort of bicycle parking is provided, you can count that toward your bicycle parking requirement. Uh, we needed to add a definition for drive-through restaurant. A few others, short-term rental, short-term rental guest, small-box discount store, uh, transient person. That goes along with, uh, our short-term rental definition. And then we needed to modify several definitions. Uh, these are all very exciting. Average horizontal maintained illumination, we had to modify that. Convenience stores to set a minimum and maximum floor area. Modify the duplex definition, modify enclosed roofed accessory structure. Uh, hotel motel, um, restaurants, fast-food restaurant, drive-in restaurant, uh, shed and storage structure, woodland, that's a really minor change. And then, uh, building frontage. And that's it. That was a lot. I, we do have a recommendation, uh, but before I get to that, are there any questions?
Any questions from the commission on Mr. Holmesy's extensive report and updates for us today?
I have none.
All right. Yep, so this is a public hearing continued, so we will need to close the public hearing.
I don't see a ask for comments from the public.
We need.
Yeah, I guess I should.
We need to open, I don't, we didn't open it last time.
Oh, you didn't?
We just continued it, so we need to open the public hearing.
So, we need to open it first?
Right.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, open a public hearing to address this, uh, zoning text amendment to modify various sections of the zoning code, PC dash two-five dash zero-zero-eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Holmesy, call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And Mr. Urbis.
Yes. Now that we have a open public hearing, do we have any audience participation this evening? Seeing there are none, then I believe we move into closing the public hearing, if I am correct on that. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Fisher, Mr. Holmesy, call the roll to close the public hearing, please.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And Mr. Urbis.
Yes. Now that we have closed that, I believe then we can go to a staff recommendation.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. The staff recommendation is that the applicant's request for a recommendation to City Council for approval of zoning code text amendments be approved.
All right, do I have any comments on the staff recommendation?
I have none.
I have none.
No.
Any others? Okay, with that, do we have a motion from the commission, Mr. Lackey?
I do. I have a motion to approve a zoning code text amendment. Uh, whereas an application has been received from Tom Robillard, Director of Planning and Development, City of Kettering, Ohio, requesting approval of zoning code text amendments to amend selected portions of the City Kettering zoning code. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held a hearing on August the fourth, two thousand twenty-five. And whereas the request constitutes approval of a recommendation in Kettering City Council to amend selected portions of the Kettering City, City of Kettering zoning code as presented by staff within their staff report and oral presentation. And whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of facts presented by staff in their staff report, which is incorporated into this motion, I move that the applicant's request for a recommendation to City Council for approval of zoning code text amendments to the City of Kettering zoning code be approved.
All right, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second, any comments on the motion? All right, Mr. Holmesy, if you call the roll of the motion, please.
Uh, Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
And Mr. Urbis.
Yes. Motion is approved, thank you very much. Thank you for your work, uh, extensive and glad to see, um, we're able to move forward for the city and future developments. So, appreciate that very much.
Thank you for listening.
Great job. All right, moving on, um, new business, I believe we have none at this time. And audience participation, if we have anyone that would like to come to lectern and speak, seeing that we have none, we will move on to other business. Mr. Holmesy, signing of plats?
Uh, we have none this evening.
All right, any communication and reports?
Uh, nothing major. We already, uh, we do have the, I believe, the third steering committee meeting for the comprehensive plan this Wednesday. So, that, that process is moving along very well. Um, I think that'll be a very active meeting. Then we have one application, uh, for a conditional use at, that is scheduled for the, I believe, the eighteenth. And that is a, uh, application for approval of a surface parking lot, uh, in an office zoning district. And this is related to the Blueberry Cafe. There's that, uh, abandoned building just to the east. It's kind of on the corner of Glenmore and West Dorothy. They want to demolish that building and just establish a standalone parking lot there for use by the Blueberry Cafe. So, uh, we don't have any other applications yet, uh, but that's what we have so far.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any other planning commission comments?
No, none.
None? Um, I do, I, I did, I failed to mention, uh, this morning when we were introducing our commission, I failed to mention that, uh, Vice Chair Waskey, uh, had an excused absence this evening, so he was not able to join us as well as, um, uh, Connie Gaul was not with us tonight as well. But Mr. Holmesy did a wonderful job taking care of that, so we appreciate that very much. Uh, nothing else? Uh, I will adjourn the August fourth meeting at eight oh-four P.M. And we will, um, be back here on August the eighteenth. This meeting is closed, thank you.